Six forty-six. I'd like to call this Special Pension Committee meeting to order for January eighteenth. And if you would, we'll call.
Mark Cagney.
Scott Carden.
Dean Morgan.
Kevin Cunningham. You have one absent. If you could, you have a minutes for the pension meeting dated December thirteenth. Read through that. Is there any motion at this time?
I have any and so on. Correction.
Mm-hmm.
Item three number five. It says that I motion doesn't have a second. It should be stopped. Accept the motion.
Second with all favor.
With that correction, I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second. Second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And new business, you have two items for tonight. I gave you the second packet just now. Item number one. Retirement request for Joanne Lorraine. And it was studying for IRD two thousand and one, twenty-one years of service. This is for a request for a monthly pension to be distributed at nine hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents starting March first, two thousand twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve pension request for Joanne Lorraine. Nine hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents per month starting one of March twenty twenty-two.
Okay, a second. Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The second part of your packet is something I just gave you. We had a request for retirement from John Ravenel for his amount of service is twenty-six years or still over that, twenty-six years of service. Started the employment at twelve eighteen nineteen ninety-five. So his request is for the monthly pension for seventeen hundred and four dollars and seven cents, commencing on February first, two thousand twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve. Seven hundred and four dollars and seven cents.
Second motion. Second. All in favor, second. Any other discussion? And I do wish John well, he's served the town very well for twenty-six years and on his term, has taken on a lot of responsibilities over the last year. We want to thank him for that. All, any other discussion here? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And that. Any motion to adjourn?
So.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the time is now, seven P.M. I'd like to call this Special Board of Select meeting to order for January eighteenth and ask that you please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to my United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and infinite.
Thank you, and this time roll call.
Mark Cagney.
Kevin Cunningham. Item C, to approve the meeting minutes on Board of Select meeting to order, December twenty-seventh. Is there a chance to read through those?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for twelve twenty-seven, twelve one.
Second. Motion is second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And item D, public comments. Does anybody here from the public that wishes to speak? Please just state your name and address if you.
Matt Ray, Ms. Wusa. I was wondering if there was an update on the Board of Select's plans for a charter revision commission in two thousand twenty-two.
That will probably be at our next meeting for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Now's the time to speak.
This is the right time, I think it's the only time, but I'm just here in support of the, what was called the annex, I guess, that building on Route twelve. And I'd really like to see that considered for different options and not taken down.
And you would be Virginia San Pedro.
I didn't say that in the beginning.
I don't think so.
Okay, Virginia San Pedro, Wusa.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If there were else to have this and say this is rude, perjury.
That's a change. I also wish to make a comment on the annex. As with the historical society, we are having a lot of input from a lot of different areas. How much should that, with you, this is where it should come. Number one on the whole agenda is the emphasis on how historic it is as being on the State Legislature of Historic and also part of the Central Village National Historic District. So there's a lot of emphasis for very great importance. And along those lines, I would like to suggest to see a lot of justification for the demolition before we actually get to that, something documented. And along with that, I know the minute you say about looking for anything, we can stand up and scream that we don't have in mind, but I would like to also see some active fundraising, whether it be as gifts or from the federal area, the preservation organizations. I think there's a lot of places that don't know who could use them. And I'd like to see some effort put back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We do not have any items for old business, we can go into new business. Item number one, a new business, consider and act on the tax refunds as requested by the tax collector totaling nine ninety-six and eighty cents. Toyota Lease Trust for two sixty-six thirty. Eight Car Leasing Limited, two ninety-eight seventy-seven. B.W. Credit Leasing Limited, two twenty-four forty-nine. And CCAP Auto Lease Limited for two oh seven twenty-four. Grand total of nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents.
Make a motion to approve. Tax refunds for nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents.
Thank you. Any other discussion at this time? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number two, discuss and act on the process of a special election to fill a seventh position on the Board of Finance as voted upon by the Charter Revision Update. See, item number two in your packet, what was given to us by the attorney for this item, and it's really the change in adding number two in there, Board of Select shall convene a special election to be held as soon as practicable, I'll say it right, practicable after the effective date of the amendment of the Charter, Amendment of the Section four dot one B, to elect a seventh member of the Board of Finance. Said special election shall comply in all respects to the Connecticut General Statutes, section nine dash one sixty-four B. The term of that office shall expire on the date of November twenty twenty-three. Regular municipal elections, at which election a candidate shall be elected to an office for a six-year term. So really, at this point, it is the point for discussion as to when that could be. There's been multiple things that were discussed with the attorney, how that could be also. I had discussions with the registrar of vote, one of the registrar of voters voted, and the issues that they have. You could do a special election in a hundred and twenty days from now. You could do an election in the November timeframe, this coming November timeframe, or you could wait for the entire term to expire in two thousand twenty-three and elect someone at that point. So it's multiple options. The question would really be, from the registrar's point of view, would cost? So if we were to try doing something early, the cost could be to have everything done at one polling place. Or you wait till November and therefore there is no cost. Or wait till the following November, and again, no cost. So there really is a question of, have you given the chairperson for the Board of Finance here? So I think that's an appropriate thing, that they know what's happening. So in case there's a question or concern to ask the chair, but I just want to know what your feeling is on this.
The first thing is, this paper that you gave us is the change to the Charter.
Yes.
Would be.
Yes.
So the first item, that wouldn't be correct, I would say, in the second sentence. At each regular town election, the town shall elect two members of the Board of Finance to serve for six years.
Right.
That would leave out one.
Understood.
So had me.
Yep.
So there is some.
Worse than me.
Two years, one for three, three, one year. It doesn't matter to me as far as time. My biggest question was if we had to go through appointments, appointment positions, or that they got to you on that, the town court, the CBA, June Engle.
Yeah, I can follow through with those at the elector right now. The question came out of Section four four for vacancies. And if you take a look at item C, any vacancy in any other elected town office except for the first selectmen, from whatever cause arising, shall be filled by the Board of Select for the unexpired portion of the term, or until the next town special or regular election, whichever is sooner. We have satisfied that for the first section. We have actually, as Board of Select, satisfied that as the first of the three others. So.
So I know it just flies to twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Definitely have to go for the twenty-three.
I don't know what you think, Scott. In the interest of money, I would say wait, at least for November.
I would vote this actually, you know, I've done some of the improvement of this, especially with the state statute interpretation. Even the Charter of Revision needs to be, right, a few more. What I know that was very interesting, the state statute, was that wording was that we may elect a special meeting day. It wasn't worded as that we shall. So I think this is certainly a discretionary issue. I think this would best interest the town, that we actually do the way, the way, and go to the next regular, next regular elections. Like, this.
State or local?
Local.
Local.
So we just hold off for the two-year period? Yeah, I, I'm with you. I mean, I see the way, I don't think strongly, but I think it's probably best that we, and then when we go to the next state election, I'm willing to go to the next one.
Well, then you don't give up a six-year cycle. You get this coming where you get a six-year cycle out of the election.
You, a lot of things, and of course, the other positions, I just want to back down for position, especially this election cycle, as you know, I've been kind of year-to-year town clerk position over the last couple of years, and you have a good understanding of that as well, as reasonable as you can see. She can speak, that's the key. The volume of responsibility that the town clerk takes in an election cycle is crazy. So in the best interest of the town, I would, I'd go to a motion, I mean, with the special action, not with any special, also going to carry it forward to the twenty-one, the initial, I mean, my, my, it's not going to be, it's not how we, all the motion that we, for this, for the election, for the Board of Finance position, the second position, that position, in November twenty-three.
Second. Motion's been made, second. I'm hoping that the Board of Finance will stand with that and that we're moving forward as a matter of the day. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number three is to discuss and vote on reappointments of municipal boards and commissions. I do want to start off by saying thank you to all those people who volunteer their services to do, to all boards, whether it's elected or in this case appointed. So we have a list here, and it takes a little while sometimes to put this all together. So just for your future reference, I also want to tell each one of the members from their own boards, so you can at least understand that there are a lot of people that volunteer their time and services, and we're still looking for people. So while I have this moment just to bring it forth to the public, we are looking for vacancies for a couple of the appointed positions, such as, on the ag commission, we are looking for two alternates, one to be Republican, on the. We are looking for economic development, and that is for a vacancy. Now, it's listed here as a Democrat, but in looking back at the town charter, it could be anybody. Really, it doesn't have to be a poll left that position. If we can find a Democrat, that's fine. If we can't, we can always fill a position. So I'm looking for that. We are looking for the Conservation Commission. We're looking for three alternate stare, one Republican, two Democrats. We are looking for the Ethics Commission, a vacancy is on the Democrat side. We are looking for the Housing Authority, which is always looking for someone as a resident commissioner, so we are looking for that as well. I think.
That is fair.
So what you have in front of you on that other paper is a list of the updated, I did do a final update for the one I just gave you tonight. No, those are all, that is for the health district, we did that last year. So that has to be, all this. If you notice that there are, I'll read through them very quickly, a request to appoint the following people to their terms. One is for agricultural commission, Michael DeJardin is a Democrat, Vern Gray, unaffiliated. Their terms would expire January fifth, two thousand twenty-six. For the building code Board of Appeals, Scotland Court, Republican, term expires January fourth, two thousand twenty-seven. Conservation Commission, where again, we're looking for more people, but right now Sylvia Wilk, Democrat, term expires January sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Economic Development Commission, Jody Clark, Paul Smith, both Democrat positions, and those are January fourth, two thousand twenty-seven. We do have an opening for the Ethics, we don't have anybody filling in who we have requests out there. Housing Authority at this time, we're still looking for people for the resident position. Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission, Ronald DeJardins, Democrat, Ralph Wells, unaffiliated, both terms expire on January fifth, two thousand twenty-six. So at this time, I would entertain a motion, unless you wanted to do them one at a time, a motion to accept those presented to you for appointed positions and their terms.
Make a motion to accept appointments of the names listed for their terms, for the appointed boards listed.
And any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, I gave you the homework, small packet. This is discuss the possible set dates for public hearings or discussions about the annex building. And so, I'd like to be able to bring forth as much information to the public for information discussion as possible, what I gave you for homework, as some history took it. One of the items talks about, the item that we're, the first one, was the Plankville High School Annex Building Committee, and that is feasibility study done in January eighteenth, two thousand and five, which was actually started when the old high school was being demolished, that was behind the annex area, and there was a few people on that board. So I gave you as much as possible for information. I didn't give you the minutes, but I can share that if you'd like. So Jada Cook and Jepson did a demo presentation about what would go down, how much it would cost, and then this particular annexed committee talked about possibilities. So they voted at that time to keep it, that was the suggestion to the Board of Select at that time. And then you have, of course, the high school annex conditions assessment feasibility study that was in there, your packet also. At the end of the packet was a summary, a summary of the cost at that time, and the twenty-two thousand dollars, much for selected demo, site work, new construction, general conditions, contingencies, the designs. You would also see on the next page, what would be the cost to maintain on an annual basis. And then you would see, final section was a overview from a company that came in to do assessment, and also looked for areas that were of concern. And the two areas that they had of concern was, every one of the windows, sixty windows has asbestos in the caulking area, and each of the lights that are in there are, before they made changeovers from the, to non-PCB, so they're all PCB, there's three hundred or so lights in there. And so they gave us a figure, a rough figure of how much it would cost to remit, or to take out the windows, take out the lights, and then how much it would cost for demo. So I still think it's something then to bring forth to the public, to let them know what the history is, what the pros and cons are, but I'd like to be able to start setting up meetings for that, so we could actually talk about it and the public. So would you like readings of all of that?
Okay.
Yeah, there's interesting history.
Yeah, I'm with it.
So it's a public informational discussion. I will bring as much to the table with documentation for all the public to share, and I do appreciate the fact that people have interests and concerns both ways, you know, how much it costs to keep and how much it costs to take it down, what you can do with it, all those are appropriate things, I think, for discussion. So the earliest we really could have something for public information, to get it out there, give at least a notice, notification, I've got it down here for initial discussion, for the integrity of the public, not just one. This is not a simple, let's go to a meeting, say yea or nay to it and bond, this is something that's going to take a little while to discuss. But the first one I'd like to have is, if possible, would be for February tenth, and that's at six-thirty. February tenth is a Thursday. I looked on the calendar, because there's a lot of other boards and committees that need, try to find something that's open and available, so everybody has access to get to. So I would entertain a motion at this time to bring for a public informational discussion about the Plankville High School Annex on February tenth at six-thirty P.M., here at the town.
So move on, make that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made.
Second.
Any other discussion? Definitely try to have another one or two of these to get more involved in it, but I think it's a good start. Motion's been made in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And item number five. There's a list for you for line item transfers. We're trying to keep as close to the numbers as possible, and we talk to every department about that, if there's something that's coming up. As an example, if you look to the next to last one, it talks about tax refunds. That has been talked about on a regular basis, talking about how the tax refunds have been driven by. This is a difficult climate for vehicles, and people aren't looking to get rid of their lease to buy something else, they're actually looking to buy what they have, because there's nothing out there. There's no vehicles out there. So that's why you see a lot of that tax refunds, which is going out to the, like you saw tonight, back out to the leasing companies. So those are some examples, coming from contingency to the highway department head position, small amount, highway salaries, and then mechanic. I think those can be explained. Aye. Union negotiations, as far as, we have completed the completion of that union contract, so therefore we need to transfer the monies so we can pay. We already allocated monies in contingency for that, so that's an example. Police holiday pay for dispatchers, and dispatchers are at a premium, we're looking for more. So if you know anybody that's looking for a part-time or a full-time position, please contact the police department and talk about that, because we need more people. In the meantime, what happens is, because you don't have enough people, we do more overtime, because you have to fill those hours. So that's why that is a request for that transfer. And then from retirement payout to telephone, we found that there's a upgrade that was being done after we had passed our budget. So the upgrade was for something for higher-speed Wi-Fi, talking about how that would work in here, so that was the issue. It costs us more than what we anticipated, so that's why the twelve thousand dollar transfer. For all part, hypertension from tax refunds, we just mentioned that. And the last one is heat and refused disposal to supplies for building grounds, because we're doing a lot of upgrades. So that's a list you have in front of you, the line item transfers for now. Are there any questions?
Yes. Yes. I understand the first ones.
Yep.
The dispatcher, you said why? Is this going to be close? Twenty thousand is it? No. Because I was looking at it.
Dispatches.
Right, okay, they already use, as of one-sixth, January sixth, they already use a hundred twenty-six thousand. It leaves eight-six dot, almost eight-seven thousand. You're going to add twenty thousand, so if you go at the same rate, they're still going to be twenty thousand short by the end of the year.
Unless they hire more people in the meantime. So we're anticipating this to be close, but if we hire more people, it'll be okay.
Okay. And then, okay, next one, telephone, same thing. Is that just a one-time thing?
Yeah, because it will be a little restructuring, the budget coming up.
So the rest of it just go normal?
Yeah.
Okay. And then tax refunds, same thing? Is it low? Are we low balling that? Because I did estimate, it's about a thousand dollars each time, and it's thirteen weeks left. So that seems like that's going to be low at the end, too. I think, if it goes at the same rate, I figure that, we spent eleven-five, you're asking for ninety-five, I think there was only, it's not getting to the limit, there's only three hundred dollars left. So if you go at the same rate, it's going to be like three thousand short maybe on that. You know, why not?
It could be a little down. Or the farm, plus that.
I'm just making sure, you know, rather than do it later, if it's going to be that short. And the other one was same thing, with supplies for building ground. That seems short, too.
Well, he just wanted to go, go to Terry, to the maker, so I know he just said that little bit, so hopefully that'll hold off from the year. So this should hopefully hold, there are any passing items, it's a very solid.
Yeah, I think if.
It's a recreation, within recreation, purchase our own, at the daycare center, so we should go.
Some more questions? So we'd really look to entertain a motion this time to accept the line item transfers as presented and then send them to the Board of Finance for review.
Make a motion to accept the line item transfers as written, send them to the Board of Finance for review. I make a motion to accept the line item transfers as written, and send them to the board of finance for review.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, item number six, to discuss an act on police department requests for a new record system and also generator for the balance. So you have papers that talk about what is, we're looking for, requested. I will just caution with one item. There was a request to also add in the, for the generator, it's the, there's a switch.
Yes, it's going to be the transfer switch. So that was actually included in last year's. So that was just, I reached out to the company who received that testament from last year, and it's currently going to be around at $76,595. Partly a three percent increase, not possible, we just got everything.
So here's where it gets down into the weeds. By the way, I think that both of these are definitely needed. It's something that we come, we had in our five-year capital. We talked about putting it in for next year's budget, whether we take it out of the general fund now or possibly later. That's another question. If right now is healthy enough, my concern is this. If we were to push this forward to the board of finance, saying $200,555 for the first one, or $76,595 for the second one, and you go out to bid and it comes in more than that, and board of finance does the same thing, they approve up to a certain point, then you're at a sticking point where you can't go any higher. So I think what I'd like to do is round it up a little bit, not to exceed a certain dollar value, and therefore you're covered in case the bid comes in a little. As long as this held under, as long as the bids come in underneath that, and you can obviously get it for these numbers, fantastic. But if you're kind of stuck, if we say, here's the number you're going to be able to go for.
To a similar product of the last year.
Right. So if you're looking at maybe a 10% on each one, just so that we know that there's a max. If I was to say that the records management system to be approved and going forward to the board of finance for their discretion, they have to then approve it and then send it off to the town or town meeting, because it has to be done via the town charter, by the way. If I was to say $220,000 for the record management system, not to exceed, and then we're talking about $84,000 for the generator, not to exceed, that should cover anything we need from the bid. Is that appropriate? I think that's pretty much the same way, it has to be drafted for the board of finance to do that, so the town meeting can not worry about this. That would probably be my motion, to say I would approve the record management system to go in front of the board of finance for spending no more than $220,000. And for the backup generator to spend no more than $84,000, bring that both forward to the board of finance for their discretion at that point. Questions?
Yeah, the record management system, that's, that's in excess of your computer budget, right? Correct?
Yes.
None of that, none of your computer budget goes into this.
So with the records management system, there is, you know, fees that we pay towards the actual records management system itself. So it's off the top of my head, I'm going to look at my calendar, but we do pay annually towards a software maintenance so-called for our current system. And that's all built into this current thing, which what we would be looking to go for would be an annual maintenance.
Yeah. Yeah, you, yeah, somebody else does it for you.
Yes, yes.
Can you tell me who does that?
So if we're going with a company, it would be that company, the next-gen company that we're looking to. They would be the one providing to the software.
And that's what their name is, next-gen?
That would be the one that we're doing research into, yes. We got the pricing from our previous company and see what's become obsolete. So we're looking towards next-gen, using the benefits and our ability to level it from certain sort of.
And I also noticed on your capital improvement for next year, you put $90,000 for the generator. Is that anticipating?
That's anticipated, yes. And so we're gathering as much now, three percent as far as the $90,000, it would be anticipated just going up every single year.
Just about $90,000. Yeah, the chief and I spoke about that, and we were talking about numbers, and I said, better to ballpark it a little higher in case. That's why I was.
That's why I picked this.
Yeah, 10% in receiver in case, but not to exceed.
In the storage garage, just staying on the capital improvement?
Yes.
Can I ask you something about that? Is that large enough?
Storage garage?
Yeah. Is that large enough? I was looking at this, sixteen by thirty.
So yes, it would be large enough. Basically, it's just a maintenance, I think, that we bring in some just cars. When we take something in, we're supposed to keep it back in the same condition that we take it in. Obviously, even the impact, it's very hard to do that. Also, when we're doing search warrants on vehicles, we have to maintain that in that atmosphere where all the evidence can be preserved. So that's about the size that we need to, in order to house our own command and error background.
Right, that, you'll bring that out?
Yes.
I did notice something else on that. The storage garage?
Yes.
There's no garage door listed.
There's no garage door listed?
No. It's just a regular walk-through door, no garage door. Make sure they go left.
Would you entertain a motion at this point?
I make a motion to. Food, I guess food. $220,000 for the records management, $84,000 for the generator, to move forward to board of finance for review.
Not to expend.
Not to expend, more than.
From the funding.
Yes, okay, it would be a total of.
Three hundred and forty.
Yeah. Yeah, three hundred and four thousand.
Motion's been made in a second, any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're meeting tomorrow night for the board of finance. Do you have a counter? This is for informational only. For anybody interested, there is a, Day Campbell Hospital is doing the COVID-19 community vaccine play. And that is going to be held here this week, from Friday, from 2:00 to 5:30 PM. It is listing that they'll be doing the youth Pfizer vaccines, from children five to 11. For anybody who's looking for Pfizer, Moderna, J&amp;J vaccine, first or second doses, and also booster doses. All you need is your vaccine card, insurance card, some sort of form of ID. I will also share with you some other things for the board of selection to know that the, is the work of the committee for, this is the head hot building committee. They looked at the highway department and did a view of that, and the bus office as well, and this is their findings. I also will share with you one more thing for our homework. I've already put it in your packet. Do you have something? Yeah. So there is a request for discussion for a new ordinance, establish citation plus procedures applies for municipal court violations. This is talking about ordinance, it's for like, and again, this is the early discussion on this, and this is a suggestion, so it's your turn now to get a look at it. And I don't think there's anything else. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much, we're now adjourned.